Hello, everyone? Do we have any public participation this evening? Wanda?
I just had a question for Jeanne about the basketball and the grades on the school. Has that changed this year?
There have been some changes.
I mean, is that a state change or our change?
No, that's our change.
Yeah. And is that in our policy, in our handbook?
There is a statement in there that talks about the principal and the athletic director changes, but certainly if there are any parents or players that have concerns, I'd be more than happy to speak with those parents.
Well, they have, you know, today I talked with a couple myself and they're saying there aren't enough kids and we've always even started down into the first grade.
I'd be more than happy to talk with those parents if they would like to, or even the athletic director should go to firm.
Because it's funny, I think it was Tuesday on the radio, the Principals Association, one of 2.9, they had a little barf in there about sports giving students confidence and I said it could do good. And I think right now this is going to affect some of our kids down here about that. And what's the sense of all of us last year, we all sit down there and redid that whole handbook if we don't stick to it. And I'm just wondering tonight, and I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson at the end to get me some policies if he can help on, and I'm going to ask tonight, are you guys going to talk about the fuel situation at the school?
The what situation?
The fuel situation down there.
Uh, the fuel situation. Enlighten me a little bit.
Well, they had, were they had a little issue with it the first of the week, or did they not?
Fuel situation.
Okay, evidently only I know that one then. I'll share it with you.
There is an overage of fuel use, yes. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. I call that a fuel situation.
It's probably because we're up 30 percent on degree days so far this year that we've used a lot of fuel. We can't really pinpoint an exact cause of it right now until I get an engineer in here to figure out fuel usage in different parts of school. That is...
So it really isn't an issue then?
If you want to call an overage of on the fuel budget an issue, yeah, I guess there is an issue because we're up on the fuel budget.
Yeah.
But we're also up on a price from last year too, as far as how much we paid last year compared to this year. And we also have an increase of degree days this year by 30 percent. So it's actually been colder this year than last year.
No doubt about that.
So...
Yeah, okay.
Any other public participation? Hearing none. To consider approval of February 14th, 2019, school committee minutes as written or with corrections as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
What corrections were recommended by the Superintendent of Schools?
That's a standard line.
Oh, okay.
Okay. If there were a correction, it would be noted.
I have one thing that I'd like corrected on there. I don't recall seeing that it was survey for, let's see, it's the second page? Second page.
Which one?
Let's see here, one, two, three, fourth paragraph down. Survey was a healthy activity. I said, ah, it was to promote a healthy environment.
Okay. We can make that correction.
What did you say, Stephanie, a healthy?
It was to promote a healthy environment, not particularly that this was a healthy activity.
Okay. Okay, they have a motion on that.
Move to approve as amended.
Okay, they have a second on that. Any further discussion? All in favor? Say it on paper.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Please. Can you copy that? On March 6th, our P-Peg steering committee will meet. That is our evaluation for teachers and support staff. And this is a year that we look at to see if we want to tweak anything, how it's been going and working for teachers. On March 8th, we have an early release day and we'll be doing sessions nine and 10 of Fred Jones Tools for Teaching. Also on March 8th, grades close for the second trimester. On the 12th, we're going to the Lubeck Library for a Chauki Foundation presentation of Howards of Maine. On March 12th is also a Washington County Leadership Team meeting, which I participated in. I have a question, so I guess just to vote from Kathy. In terms of old computer equipment that does not work, that's up on the high school end, what do you want us to do with that? And that's just a question to throw out and maybe come back at the next board meeting or two.
This is equipment that was supposed to be disposed of like two years ago.
Kathy, it should be disposed of. It's taking up room, it's useless.
Is this in the storage closet just past the offices?
Two different places.
I believe it was supposed to be disposed of two years ago, but I think it's been done since then.
Is there still electronic recycling that's been sold?
I don't know. It's just during the summer.
There's various times.
Yeah.
Yeah, Renee would go. She's on top of that. Or where somebody could take it. She would have all that information. The exec going to me is great on top of that with the time.
Find out what we have there, I guess, and we'll put it on the next agenda and see what to do with it.
Do you want to maybe make like a list of things?
I don't know what's here.
A lot of stuff. Some of it can be, some of it's trash, some of it maybe it would be resold for a little bit, or it's no good to us.
Question that, were the hard drives removed?
Not, no. Of the old laptops, not yet, but there are some hard drives that have been removed that are sitting down there that need to be disposed of. And I've spoken to Nate about it from Eastport, and he said he was not able to take care of any of the stuff for us.
Okay, but I thought last year at this time that it was up to date, all the hard drives were removed, and that's what the last IT technician said, that it was just dropped to remove everything and to dispose of it properly and remove the hard drives for security reasons. I just wanted to follow the security reasons.
There are some hard drives sitting in boxes. I don't know what they're from, but there are also old laptops, old white MacBooks that are down there. They've been down there for a while, all of them.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can get a list together of whatever they are and find out if electronic recycling is available. I don't know if there is right now, so...
This one is now website that's seasonal.
Yeah, they just currently do it in summertime, so...
At the last meeting, I talked briefly about the March 22nd, which is the teacher's workshop day, if that could be a regular student day and teachers being able to attend on Saturday. That could make up a snow day.
How much notice before the next meeting we have on that? Well, we hit the making up snow days right now. We haven't got five snow days yet, right?
Right. We don't have to have five snow days before we start making them up. So that gives like 20, the 22nd of March would be the change for students, so that gives us like four weeks that what parents know that it can be a regular student day.
Now, how does the board feel about that?
It makes sense to have the kids on a regular school day if the teachers are around coming on Saturday.
Pull the board. How do you feel?
If we don't use all the snow days, would this shorten the year by one day then? They're doing an extra day. So school would end one day earlier.
Well, we still owe two. We're behind by three. This would take care of one of the three.
Okay, I bet we didn't sync up until we get five.
No, they're extended out. We've got five days latched on to the end of the year. So I think it would be a good idea if, you know, for this way here, we wouldn't have to have an extra session or an hour session, add it in for a week or a Saturday session.
And I can put notices and reports passed.
Yep. I'd make a motion that we have that as an option and that May, March 22nd be a regular student day, where it would be the teacher's workshop day. Does that look great?
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? There we go. We have one school day made up.
So now here comes the good news. I forgot to put this down, but the week started out very cold and the wind snapped the sign off, hopefully the historical society.
Yes.
Which we did find, and it is in the IA shop, which the art teachers said is probably good because it will thaw out and dry and you can get some epoxy paint and fix that. There's not a whole lot of damage. I didn't think we'd find it myself, the way the wind was blowing. So then from there, we discovered that there were two rooms in which the temperature was 59 degrees, so eastern plumbing heating came down and we've been able to bump them up to 62 and 64 degrees. And we've had, I've had people use my classroom and I'll go to my office to teach to try to get people to...
What room is that?
That would be Mrs. Street's room, next first and second grade. So when eastern came down, the owners are gone. He's trying to do an estimate from where he is. He estimates repairs would be between four and five thousand dollars. There are some valves that will need to be changed though, so that's cutting pipes and that type of stuff. And I don't know the details of having them right. It could be less than that. I think he's giving us a high end, but I haven't said to do anything at this point. I think things are expensive and you go before the board, correct?
Have those vents been closed up there? Is there fresh air vents, Dr. Benson?
Yeah, the metal vents that are outside have got styrofoam up in them, and then the ones that are on the cement wall have plastic wrap and duct tape. So those are all closed off on that side, yeah.
So it's that the heater is not getting enough heat in there because the valves are gone or something?
Yes. And there's probably a lot more detail, but you would be better off not listening to me, a coat.
Maybe the circulator's in the valve too.
Yeah.
With the board.
So that's it for your information.
And that's for the two rooms down on the lower side here, in front of the building.
And then, let's see what we keep going, and then today, we had some sprinklers that froze down the LCOC wing, so main fire protection just left.
Didn't we just replace that compressor last year? Why did they freeze? Why do they have water in the system?
Because there's, well, I paid attention, there's hot air coming from one side, cold air coming from the other side, and when the two hit, they cause more. So I don't know what that will cost. He hopes he got them all. He was down through there. They came today, they showed up about 3:30, were there until 5:30, they just left.
And this is their manual inspection they do?
No, this was come before they freeze and we have a great flood like we have two years ago. We were actually lucky that the air didn't get in there. Cecil came down, Sheldon was down there, Kenny and I, and the gentleman from main fire. And there's my report. No, but, oh.
No.
Oh, sorry, yes, you wanted...
Mr. Chase.
Yes, yes, yes. You had asked for information on the gentleman on the presentation, so that came off his vote tab on his website. I did send him a couple of emails. He works with grades five and up. He feels that some of the content for the younger kids would be too heavy in terms of depression and violence and that type of thing. The cost for him to come for a full day program, the investment would be $3,200. Or if you would prefer a single one-hour talk to students and staff, followed by a 30 to 45 minute question and answer, it would be $2,200.
Question, what are the grades that he's recommending that this is appropriate for?
Five and up.
Five and up?
Which is approximately 25 degrees.
Mike, could I ask someone thing?
Yes.
About what's the medical center? Maybe they, maybe they have some grant money, something or two to kick on this, if you guys decide to do it.
You said there was something with Title I? I actually, I've made a statement in previous board meetings that if the board wanted to pursue this activity, that I was confident I could find the money. I've got a list of potential sources right here. I've referenced this particular page in your audit before, since I'm talking about it, I'm happy to distribute that. And as a matter of procedure, I'll just send these down the line. And this is actually a page taken from your audit. What you're looking at is a collection of unexpended grant funds ranging in topics from high school equipment sales, Maine Community Foundation, school mall, Target, Gulf of Maine Research Institute, Melmac Robotics, Maine Community Heritage, Powell Art Grant, Susan Curtis Camp, Prevention Coordinator, Instructional Television, and so on. I'll spare you the entire list. But the rule is, if you know what the original purpose of these grants pertain to, you can expend the money on related items or things that would be in the same vein as the original purpose of the grant. However, some of these programs are vintage. They've been audited repeatedly over and over again, and the audit captures the amounts and reflects that, and the money is essentially just sitting there. So my point is, if any of you on this board feel like you don't know what the original purpose was, and these grant funds are of some vintage, can we use them for something else? The answer is, per recommendation from our auditor, this board can designate another purpose for them. So when you say to me, where's the money going to come from if we vote to do this anti-bullying, mutual respect activity? I'm looking at a line that says Prevention Coordinator, 1,094. That would cover half of the $2,200 option immediately. And I could certainly scrape up something from the rest of these lines, but this board would have to vote to designate something from there. Now, a few of the items on this list you couldn't touch, obviously Title I-A, Two-A, Local Entitlement, P-E-P-G. This particular page captures the transition of adult education funds over to the town side, so those have been taken off your books and it's on the town side now. But there are many other items here. I'll use another example. High school equipment sale, $1,737. Essentially, at one point in time, there was unused equipment that was sold and the revenue was captured here. That's $1,737 that we can spend on something. So that's 1,737, and the 1,094 where it says Prevention Coordinator, that's certainly enough to cover the $2,200 option and is almost enough to cover the $3,500. I'll do some quick math, that's something in the vicinity of $2,800 between just those two lines. So I brought this page with me to show you, A, from where I would recommend taking the money for this activity, and B, there's a fair amount of money represented on this page. And if any of these activities, if they're something that happened 15 or 20 years ago and it's either no longer relevant or it's entirely lost and we don't even know what they are, this board can vote to designate those funds for a new purpose. One.
Interesting to know what some of them are, you know, 1,700, it says Target, Melmac, what, you know, what is it? And it would help us in the future, you know, determine what might we do.
Why don't we put this on the agenda for next meeting on what we could take, and then by that time we can kind of figure out where we can pull some money from out of these grants to do that. I mean, I'm looking at some right, I mean, I agree. I don't know what DAAAP is. Oh, that's $2,693. Instructional television, 1,7184. You know, I'm kind of eyeballing that line for some technology upgrades, but you get the idea that, you know, this money, the recommendation from our auditor is to spend it if we can, but there is a procedure. That's the only thing that they would say. So I'm looking to this board for some guidance. But if that activity, to have Mr. Chase come, is something that this board wants to do, financially, it can happen. Well, if we can put that on the next agenda and we'll be able to figure out where we can capture some of the money to either do a half-day program or full-day program.
Can I ask a question as well? Since we're talking about environment, how do you get the plot environment? I'm not against it, but I'm clear enough because at that point targeting five to eight is something that K to four could be offered as well, so that if we're trying to do something system-wide, is there other things out there for lower grade kids? Because you don't pick them when they're young, you know, if you want to talk about being anti-bullying and things, we know it starts young. I really feel as a teacher who taught many grades, that maybe we should have something for the lower grades as well. Not at that scope, but some other, just maybe at the same time to, you know, address...
Is this vehemently against underage appropriate, or are you five? This is what I would recommend.
Does it have to be him? We look for somebody K through eight. His comment was just about, "Programs are best for grades five and up. Some of the content I share is a bit too heavy for the younger kids. My family history, drinking, violence, depression, et cetera."
So even his one-hour thing is for the older kids?
I mean, it's all back and forth, back-to-back emails.
There's room to wiggle on this issue. As a school board, you can say, well, we appreciate your warning, we're only going to make this opportunity available for grades seven and eight, and we'll look for another option for pre-K to six. And I like Wanda's idea about asking our school nurse if the medical center has any connections. The other thing that I was going to say, whenever we have a presentation like this where the content matter might provoke an emotional reaction, it could be sensitive for some of our families, and Tina knows this already, but it bears repeating, permission slips must go out to the families that say, I give permission for my son or daughter to attend this presentation or not. That's just standard protocol, and I think that's only fair for our families who may find this topic sensitive. But that by itself isn't any reason not to have somebody to come, but I would just encourage just to do that.
Tina, there's things to do. I said, or, or something else. Remember years ago, they had the puppets?
Dino Man? No.
No, the puppets, I remember they were all black and there was different, they were as puppets.
Yes, but was that...
Some of the programs were. We do get things all the time, we never had, or it was a money big issue. We do get things from, and other people are kind of about bullying and things that other schools recommend, we just never had the money to do it. So we'll look through the files, we have some, they also follow things I used to get from ETC, we have all about...
Local elementary P schools could contact and see what they bring in.
Because, and we have had a few close contacts, people have done performances in the past about bullying, but we never had, we didn't have the money last year to do it, to...
One thing I'll say is it's getting late. It's the first of March, and people will be booked up, so we're going to move, we're going to move.
There was a gentleman...
We can look for something maybe that's more age-related for the younger grades, up to eighth grade, and if not, we'll kind of split them, so if we have to do it that way then.
So look for somebody K eighth, or?
Yeah.
And then with backups to divide, K four?
That's what I'm trying to...
And you put for the board?
I would think that in any case, you would want to divide, you know, the content and understanding for classes are very different from a local case, and you wouldn't want to have them all together.
And then, I don't know, there could be a K eight person who has a K four portion in the morning and a five week portion in the afternoon. I don't know.
That would be good if there was one. So if there's something around that we can look at there and...
And if anybody knows.
Get information for the next board meeting?
Well, it looks like we obviously have the money. We might as well put some good use.
I mean, I was the one that suggested this, and it doesn't matter to me as long as we have so much down, but I do see most points that you're going to have kids that are younger not. You don't want the older ones right now that are dealing with this law being like, oh, this is so childish, but you want to deal with it as a whole, so maybe two separate people. I mean, I'm the one that suggested this, because he had gone to WA and, you know, it did keep the kids, he did the whole session, you know, keeping them talking about it. My kids came home talking about it.
Okay, so if we can look for someone that does K through eight, maybe they're a student that does, you know, the older kids and something like that? If not, we'll look for something that goes from K to four, and then maybe that maybe this year, we can have information for the next board meeting, like you said, it is getting late, so.
Can we also learn what these...
Yes, we're going to find out what these, what some of these, you know, international television, international social health program, and, you know, what they are and where they, when they were encumbered. Because, I mean, if they were encumbered like seven, eight, 10 years ago... Yeah. I mean, there are quite a few listed there, and there are probably only eight or 10 that I could cross off that say you can't touch this as your superintendent. At least half of them, I don't know what... Where does this money dwell right now? Where does it right now? These are all in a school bank account, literally. It's not cash in a drawer, but this is all... I didn't think it was cash in a drawer. This is all in your bank account, and it is, those are interest-bearing accounts as well.
That instructional TV was ITV, I believe, back in the day. And that is back in the day.
That's quite a few days.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a...
I believe that's what that one is.
Okay. School committee, anyone from the school committee have anything? Go ahead.
I was wondering how we're doing on developing an attendance policy from when the lady from the state came, and strongly recommended that schools have their attendance policies. The state has one, surety policy, attendance policy, but that local towns highly recommended that they have their own. Otherwise, could we just adopt the state's policy? Shows a list of things down.
I'm pretty sure we have some. I'm pretty sure we have some. I went into the policy book. What I don't know is how old they are. I know there's some in there that has that whole state section, that you must be seven years old in order for it to count, and they break your sixth grade and above and that looks like you're a teenager. We do have that piece.
Can we put that on the agenda to have that before?
Is that something we can put together for the next meeting?
I know, I'm pretty sure I can just pull out a policy book to make coffee for what we currently have.
Bring it, bring it for the next meeting.
And the state policy.
Well, I mean, after, we can look at that in the policy book that's presently on the website, correct?
I haven't been on the website. I've been too busy. Kathy does the website.
Is that policy book on the website?
What policy book? Bullying?
The Lubeck Student Handbook.
Yes.
That is on the website?
Yes, and the bullying handbook is right under it. I mean, I thought the handbook was on there.
No, we're looking for the attendance policy that's in there.
Is it in the handbook?
I don't know.
I don't, I can look right now. There is stuff in the handbook about attendance, yes.
Yeah. That's... Yeah, that's the, she was, she was saying that there is that in the handbook, but, um, we need to have, uh, a policy so we know this stuffs.
Yep.
That are taken, um, for attendance issues. But the state is very clear. We could, she said we could just adopt the state one. It's very clear. The rules are very defined in there, and, and it's not, it's very general.
Bring that for review the next meeting we have. Okay, anyone else in the school board have anything? I have a few, thanks. I have a meeting next week with another company coming in to look at the heating system upgrade, while there's been a zing in the cafeteria. Hopefully, by the end of March, I'll have some figures to roll out. And, uh, maybe even punch some figures into the budget. I'm on the school board right now, they're not. Just scary figures. So, it's, uh, well over five-hundred-thousand dollars, and we're looking to replace some oils, so. I'm also going to have a meeting, uh, next week, um, with Tim Doyle to discuss different things that are going on over in the LCOC building and stuff, and just about maintenance and stuff. And, uh, get back to you on that. Um, the other thing I wanted to note is that we got a large turnout last meeting of, uh, the teachers in the, in the school down there. And, um, the person from the university man that was going to do the survey has now opted not to participate in the survey. Because she was apparently, um, spooked is the right word, but kind of did not want to opt into the survey. And, um, actually, the survey questions, we didn't get the, we got the questions. We had no idea what we were going to do with those questions. We weren't going to ask all those specific questions. We had, you know, not reviewed them, not looked them over. And, um, you know, so some of the questions that were on there, yeah, it might, might have been a little bit meaty, a little bit chunky for people to digest. Uh, a lot of those questions would have been culled through. But the question I have is that, you know, where do we go from here? We have to have someone to do and, you know, look at professional development, see on the health of our school. And it's basically like, you know, going to the doctor every year, getting your physical checkup. And you opt not to do that for ten years, fifteen years, well, there are consequences. You know, you'll find that you'll have, you know, some kind of a, a bad disease that you could have been taking care of years ago. I'm not saying that the school is diseased, but it's basically, you know, just a healthy thing to look at, to see if we need improvements. If we don't need improvements, or if we need to tweak something here or there, and just make it easier, and, and make it more, uh, friendly for the community, friendly for the teachers, friendly for the students, whatever it might be. Okay, and it's always good to have someone come in and kind of take a peek and, you know, get that, that overview of what's going on, and get an outsider's opinion of what they see. And, you know, what improvements, or what, you know, or, or what things we're hitting on, on, on all eight cylinders above. So, so I'm kind of saddened to hear that, that Dr. Biddle has chosen not to, uh, go forward and, you know, help us out with this, so. I don't know where to go with this right now. We're just hoping that we, you know, we're back at square one again. And we have to kind of search for someone else to help us out, and, you know, um, do the doctor checkup, I guess. So, that's all I have to say on that right now, but, um, I'm sure down the road we'll find something, some kind of venue to do this, so.
Superintendent's report. Couple of quick items, uh, as you can see on my report, subsidy figures have been released, and I was happy to provide some copies. Uh, this particular page not only lists your subsidy, uh, but also subsidy around the district, so if you're curious, you can see how the other towns did. Also on this page is a list of the required local, and that is also good news. There are a few extra copies here. Actually, I'll crank out a few, don't mind passing those on back, you know?
Do you have a comparison of what they were last year compared to this year?
Yes.
Right on that same page.
So, as we can see, on the left-hand side is the subsidy, uh, FY twenty, current year is the left-hand, is like the second column. And that compares to the previous year FY nineteen. And you can see, most of our towns received more, a few received a little less here in Quebec. You did receive six-hundred and ten dollars and ninety-nine cents less. Uh, but that is a very minute adjustment. The better news is on the next column, where it says required local. If we look at Quebec's number, your required local, the amount you have to raise by law, decreased by thirty-three thousand dollars. So what that effectively does is, it gives you greater control over your budget. Uh, the required local component is expressed as a mill rate in the formula, and the state put out a newsletter that said it, it went from eight-point-four rate to eight-point-two-eight, if you're interested in the gory details. But the net effect is, your required local dropped by thirty-three thousand dollars, and you have much more control over the rest of your budget. The additional local is what is in your control. Uh, the required local is not, is required by formula, but your subsidy, pretty much the same. Yes, it went down like six-hundred-and-eleven dollars. But the better news is that your required local dropped. And I'll be sharing even better news than that, a little deeper into the agenda, we'll preview. Next item in my report, uh, a call came into, uh, my office in Esport saying that we were having some trouble with technology. And Nathaniel, uh, tech guy in Esport, was dispatched to Quebec. And he called me back and said, Mr. Johnson, Quebec probably ought to have a different configuration. Uh, more specifically, a designated server in the building. At the moment, you're essentially using another computer's hard drive that acts as a server. And it developed a hiccup, I guess you could say. Uh, Nathaniel was recommending actually purchasing a server. And after what we went through in the central office, uh, we had a quote written at our fingertips, I'm happy to say. Uh, for what he wants to do, you would actually, uh, be purchasing, uh, two different servers. They don't have the same capacity as the server we have in the central office, but it would certainly meet your needs here in Quebec. Estimated cost is twelve-hundred dollars. You certainly have twelve-hundred dollars within your existing budget on your repair and maintenance line. And, uh, what I would, what I intend to do is, I intend to authorize that purchase, because your technology infrastructure is something that, uh, I would certainly recommend upgrading uh, before you lose data, or you're unable to function at MEA testing time, or some such thing.
This is one of the things he identified last fall when he was over here looking at this, so. It doesn't come as a surprise.
Stay away from the GMA word.
I've already reported on, on this, uh, in relation to, uh, the, uh, anti-bullying, uh, activity. The last item in my report this evening, and this is, this is something that I don't think the board is aware of, but we received a letter from the town manager of Machias. This came from the town manager. And they are requesting, the town is requesting that the Quebec school department, uh, pay four-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and seventy cents. That represents outstanding lunch fees owed by resident families over the course of five years, from two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen. Now, I've spoken to Superintendent Porter regarding this matter, and his initial recommendation to the town of Machias was for them to simply write it off. And his logic, um, is, is much the same as my own. And I'll read, I'll read the second paragraph of this letter, and I do have copies for the board. Uh, I, in, in this letter that I have as a draft, I say, in researching this matter, and I'm speaking to the town manager in this draft, I would like to point out that during the same five-year time period, the Quebec school department paid the town of Machias a total of nine-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and nine cents in tuition. And I say, clearly, the presence of Quebec resident students at Machias Memorial High School is financially beneficial to the town of Machias. So my point is, my recommendation to you, and it's a recommendation, you can pay four-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars if you'd like, and my office can, can make that happen. You already paid nine-hundred-and-forty, you've already paid nine-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand over a five-year period of time as your tuition bill. If you divide that four-seventy-one by five, over five years, that's less than a hundred dollars a year. In my opinion, the families who send their children to Machias Memorial High School have done quite well. Uh, if, if, if the outstanding lunch bill is only ninety dollars a year, or ninety-five dollars a year, uh, that, that's very well. I point out, and I'm, I'm happy to share a copy of this. Um, I, I point out to the town manager a little later on in the letter that here in Quebec, given our extraordinarily high free and reduced lunch rate, that we are able to offer, uh, free lunch to our students. We don't actually send out lunch bills here in town, because everybody eats for free. That's part of the lunch program that we're able to implement. So if we actually set families a bill out of the clear blue sky, to me, um, that would cause a lot of confusion locally. And again, you know, my opinion as your superintendent is that our families have done very well, and that we as an organization, our school department, has been faithful in paying the tuition bill, which far exceeds four-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars. Uh, my advice to you as a board is not to pay that. As you can see from the letter, there's a place for myself in our chair, uh, Mike to sign. Uh, I think the letter is self-explanatory, it's polite, it's respectful. But truthfully, I don't feel the need for us to pay four-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars. Uh, but I put that to the board. You can direct me to pay four-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars, but if you think that that letter is appropriate, you can direct me to send it, and it'll go into my mail.
Question. Um, is there anything that says that if parents don't pay it, that we're obligated to pay this?
No.
So would be, if, you know, I'm not, I'm not toward paying it. But if, if the board voted to pay it, we'd be setting a precedent, saying, hey, if the parents don't pay, Quebec school pays up. So, um.
There's, there's no incentive for anybody to pay, you're right.
Exactly. And also, um, they're going back five years. And probably a lot of these families don't, and their kids aren't even in the school anymore.
That's entirely possible.
And if they, I mean, why'd they wait five years to collect? They should have been on it.
My, my sense of the matter, and I'm reading between the lines a little bit, I'm not privy to the conversation that Mr. Porter and, uh, town manager, Taryn, have had. I suspect that, um, the lunch deficit, and every lunch program, you know, runs in the red. I don't know of one that breaks even. The lunch deficit essentially got to the point where the town of Machias has the fiscal agent. Because they're the fiscal agent, they're not an SAB, and not an IRSU. They're, the town is the fiscal agent for the school department in Machias. The deficit got to the point where the town has to take action to remedy that. Uh, so essentially, Mr. Porter is asking them to write off the debt, to balance the books. And the town manager is of a different opinion. She's trying to collect that, because along with the cover letter that was sent, uh, to us here in Quebec, there's a listing of all their sending towns, including Machias proper. And the total amount, uh, was a little over twenty thousand dollars. The vast majority is owed by the town of Machias itself, simply because they send them the most students. But, uh, again, I mean, I, I've stated my opinion on the matter. Uh, but for Machias, just procedurally, that is the only remedy they have. Uh, is to either seek payment from the sending towns, or to have the town write it off as the fiscal agent. And when we say write it off, essentially, the town would be subsidizing the lunch program directly. And that by itself is not unusual. Uh, so that's a little background as to how that process works. But my opinion, uh, to this board, my recommendation is expressed in that letter. And if you're comfortable with that, I would just like a show of hands, so I can get that in the mail.
I want to ask this board to approve sending this letter to the town of Machias.
Thank you. Sorry, copy right there. That's all I had in my report for this evening.
Old business?
That one's signed.
Actually, I need that one, that one's signed. Trade, trade would be gone. Unless you want to drive to Machias and hand deliver that one. I'll save you the trip.
Okay, uh, any adjustments to the agenda?
I do not have any.
Old business? New business, consider establishing a job description for IT coordinator.
I think that's an old business question, sorry.
Go ahead.
Absolutely. Um, are there any updates on the, um, security system?
I've attempted to, to follow up with, uh, Fielding Security. Uh, after a couple of attempts, uh, it was quickly realized, and Mr. Fielding has changed his email address and has not yet returned my phone call. We do have one call in hand from CECO Security.
Which is good until March eighteen.
Thank you. Uh, CECO Security, uh, sent us a bid. Black Bear Security did not, and Fielding Security did not. So at this point, we still have the one bid in hand.
Okay, we can put that on the agenda for next meeting and see if we can get an update from Fielding or Black Bear. Black Bear just not interested, is?
They've never, we've called them, they said twice, and they said, they call us, and they never have.
New business, to consider establishing a job description for IT coordinator. Now, I have a question on this. Have we ever really established the job IT coordinator? And what is it in? Is it just a stipend position? Is it an internal school position that we give a stipend to?
That is, that is the current arrangement. So. And, and I can, I can tell you that I spoke with Kathy, uh, earlier this week.
Yeah, you were going to clarify some other issues that were involved in that.
Right, and Kathy is comfortable, uh, with the job description that has been developed. I, my recommendation at the last meeting was simple, simply to delete a couple items on page two that I felt were incon, that were conflicting with the collective bargaining agreement. I wouldn't want to put after-hours expectations codify that in black and white, but I've got complete confidence that if we have a problem, it'd be taken care of. Uh, so, I'm prepared to proceed with that particular description. Is there anything you'd like to add to that, Kathy?
No. No, it needs to be done.
Okay, you have questions on that question?
Uh, yeah, I was saying in the last meeting that it might not be in charge. The whole reason for having the stipend is because, and you have somebody in there that assesses the situation and puts out the fire and makes the call. It wasn't supposed to be a long, detailed thing that maybe we might hire it out. It was for somebody internally to take care of those immediate issues, because somebody was already doing that, but not getting any money for it. So this is, you know, they were just doing it out of their own, you know, their own kind, which wasn't fair. And so this was just somebody that was in there, that was, you know, inclined with technology, had some knowledge, I could put out the fire, make the call. And it wasn't a, there's no huge expectation on that person. You're supposed to be hiring out two professionals. I, I think that's a little much to be expecting of someone. I think it's just a general thing. Put out the fire, make the call. That's, I, that's what was being done before, and they didn't get any money for it. So we wanted reward them for doing that. It's a very simple thing.
It worked this week, when you had that problem. Okay, and, you know, I mean, you know, putting a new blade system in our, you know, server, that's beyond what you will do, and what you're capable of.
Right, yeah. The daily technology things, they do need to be done right away. They can't wait for somebody to come usually to reset a printer or, um, if I was to wait for somebody to come in and get the iPads ready for the next year. We, we had waited, you know, months at times for somebody to do that. So if I can just, if I'm familiar with the system, and I'm up on it, and I'm doing it regularly, then it's easy for me to do. But if somebody else is taking over that end of it, then that makes those fires harder for me to put out, because I don't, I'm starting from further back. Well, I mean, I don't think there's anything. It had to be called out, you could certainly do it. But I just want to make sure the, the compensation is appropriate. Because, I mean, it goes above and beyond the call of your job.
Yeah, I think, you know, this is, it's a little wordy, but it's, it's clear to the point. I mean, probably the wordiness is to really define out, you know, to make sure that, you know, we're not overreaching.
No, I don't, I don't feel like it's.
I mean, you were doing this before.
Yeah.
And, you know, with the, with the. I mean, you were doing this before, and, you know, with the, with the apples and stuff like that, and if we get a brownout or whatever, we set, and you gotta be a phone system and getting that back up, and, you know, stuff like that, so...
In my opinion, the compensation that's being offered is, um, justified for what I'm doing. What I've been doing.
What I-
As long as you're expecting to replace the whole service.
When I, when I spoke with Kathy, uh, she indicated to me that-
We'll get her a ride.
That that document captures what it is that she's doing now. So I, I don't want to give the board the impression that we're asking her to do more, 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 but is the attempt, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, was to codify what it is that she does that in.
Yeah, I, I feel that's a suitable compensation.
Yeah, I, and I'm not disagreeing with the compensation at all on that. It says that if something, if you had taken the job somewhere else, and, and we have this, it says this, um, somebody has to have all these things to fulfill, and then we were talking about, you know, well, maybe we might have to go outside to get it, well, that's sort of, you know, doesn't work, because we need somebody in there, like what you're doing, to put out the fire. Somebody internally, this was supposed to be an internal thing, because somebody's gonna have to do it internally. Unless we have a full-crime IT person all the time there, we have to be letting somebody in.
But I guess what I'm saying is if I, if somebody wasn't doing all of that, it would, internally, wouldn't work anyway, you wouldn't know what to do. You wouldn't understand the system or what to do, I mean, it's, there's a lot to it. It's, I, I, it's not technical, as far as, you know, getting into the nitty-gritty of the wires and stuff, but there's a lot to understanding how they work, and even running.
I mean, you're not replacing hard drives, and you're not, you know, replacing servers and stuff.
No, but dealing with programs that, that keep the system running.
You know, re, resetting, you know, computers as you need to, because, you know, some pressure on.
But not just that, just up, updating, and, um, like, we just got ready for the MEAs, and to make sure that all the iPads were up to the system, and then they passed the test, and-
Cannot, cannot say that word again, it irritates the principal.
Oh, okay. But we're ready, we're totally ready.
I, I just want to make sure that we always, um, that there's someone internally, if, if you left, that there would be somebody in, in the school, that this is a position for somebody to take over, so that we always have somebody to put out the fire, or even simple, maybe somebody doesn't even know as much as you, at least, if somebody has the responsibility of that. But, um, I mean, it was very clear last year, you knew what you were doing.
You would need to have somebody to be able to do that stuff. There's, if they didn't do that, then the stuff wouldn't run.
Somebody needs to be there.
Yeah.
Yeah, at all times, and if it wasn't for the position of having somebody internally that knew about it, we'd almost have to have somebody full-time that was there in case something happened. So, um, this is the internal position.
Okay, so, is, uh, can I have a motion on the job description with the two strikeouts?
Well, let, let me clarify.
Go ahead.
Uh, didn't we also talk about taking the drivers out as a, uh, condition of employment?
Yeah.
So it would be with the three last, uh, conditions of employment, second one.
And what about reappointing and get on an annual basis? And that's what it was previously on another contract.
Right, a, a, right, a stipend by definition is only good for one school year.
But that doesn't, I mean, but this is calling out a, a regular job.
Right, what would hap-
IT stipend.
Right, what, what would happen is, he would, I would essentially appoint the same person, again, like I do a coach. Um, and, and, that's typically how it functions, I mean, since the contract ends, we may do an in-house posting, and like, as a formality, but the reality of it is, I'm going to appoint somebody on an annual basis.
So on your motion, you would just put that in there to be appointed at an annual position, every, I guess it was September, this one we're doing?
Right, right.
Okay, I, I, I was more concerned about having somebody in there that says it's an internal stipend position, this is an internal stipend position.
I believe it does say this here. This is a stipend position by appoint for the school board, subject to annual re, annual review and renewal.
Um, what about being internal? And then, do we have to do anything, um, except the, the price, or it's just budgeted every year?
Right.
It's already been budgeted, it's bigger than that.
So add in the word internal, internal stipend position?
Does it have to be an hour, can't they just be a local person?
Especially not on-site when something happens.
Problem with that is that they're not on-site, and when, we need someone on-site to really be able to handle this.
Well, it seems like that would be the ideal, but if you didn't have someone who was already on staff, and you had someone in hand, that's what you'd have to do. Right? Then, I mean, the ideal is that it would be someone on staff.
I guess we're back to square one, I mean, the thing is, to have it work, you need to have someone in the building.
Other than-
It, it, it may help, I mean, procedurally, we would do an in-house posting for us, and if for some strange and unknown reason, nobody within the school had an interest in it, we would then have to advertise outside to get, to get the service. But I think the realities of it is, it will remain an in-house type of thing, I, I believe that.
But, um, okay, so if we had somebody from the outside in there, um, and, um, she had left, and she wasn't doing it anymore, and it would fall back on, the principal would have to put out the fires, make calls.
You'd be sorry.
I mean, that's what we're saying, I mean, that's why we need somebody internally designated, because it's not fair to put off.
But there may not be someone internally designated, what if Kathy left?
Mm-hmm.
Then there is no one internal, so you'd have to go external to get someone.
But they're not there to make the call, or put out the fire. So if that, somebody inside the building-
If they had to call that person in, then it-
We would-
Then, then who makes that call?
If there was literally no one, we would, we would just have somebody.
Yeah, but somebody still has to make the call, and assess the situation, and that would, I mean-
After all of the books and chalkboard.
Right, Tina would call someone.
So, do we have a motion on this at all? Okay, so what do, what do we, what do we pass a motion on?
Motion to accept sample as a amendment.
As a amendment.
Any further discussion? And the amendments on there, just to be clear on that, are the last three line items, which have to do with maintaining a valid main driver's license and satisfactory rider record, availability to work outside of normal business hours on occasions needed, and this position will require services as an as-needed basis, and may require week work beyond normal business hours, so those three items have been stricken off. All in favor?
I have one more question.
Can I get that copied back?
Uh, what about the, the person that makes the website?
That's in there.
It would be the same person, because I thought it was gonna be split up. Uh, the two people were gonna do it, and-
No, it's on, it's on the-
It's all one person.
I can hear the one doing it.
Okay, all right, I thought that, at first it was discussed that two people were doing that, but, okay.
Discussion of policy EBC, the school closings and cancellations. Okay, is this a policy we adopted back in the year?
It is. Just to refresh the board's memory, you did adopt that policy. The, the reason that it reappears is that there was discussion at a previous board meeting about the make-up day option. And procedurally, in order to use the extended day option, this board would still have to have a separate vote. And I would still have to send a letter to the commissioner, actually, it goes to Pam Ford Taylor, the, the, not, not the commissioner, but... Uh, Tina's done a little research, and we do not need to wait until we have used five snow days. You can activate that at any time, but the policy itself allows for the option. And that's what the policy provides. This board still has to decide which option. It can, we can tack 'em on at the end, we can go on Saturday, or we can do the extended day, where one hour a day for five days makes up one snow day. And that, I believe, is the decision that is in front of the board.
Okay, I need to say something about this, because I think I addressed it with the superintendent and Tina, um, principal. There was a, a survey sent out. And the survey asked, what would work best for school closing, whether it would be a make-up day on Saturday, whether it be an extra hour, uh, every day, for a period of five days to make up one snow day, or tacking the days onto the end of the year, okay? I talked to several parents around town, they never get it. I didn't get it, I didn't get the survey, because of a delay in what appears to be in the mail system, okay? It was mailed on the twenty-fifth of, uh, January, it was due in on the thirty-first of January, I believe, the thirty-first of January, if I'm not mistaken. And I didn't get my package in the mail until February eighth. And I tracked down why, and it happened to do, something to do with a computer misread how zero four six five two was written, and it sent my package somewhere to Southern Maine, and by the time it got to me, it was like, two weeks later. So, my choice in what school day closings or what options were wasn't taken, because my survey didn't get it, okay?
I, I don't remember getting one.
Well, I know I didn't get one. And I talked to several other parents, and said they didn't get one either. You have a question?
No, I haven't come.
Okay.
So I will say, out of the survey for staff, there were twenty staff members who chose to extend the school day, and two who wanted Saturday. Out of the surveys that did come back from parents, um, I had zero for Saturday, eighteen for extended day, and four to add onto the end of the year. And that, those, that, what came in is saying extend the day. And I did type up a list of things that teachers came up with that taught to both the benefits that they felt.
But, but, you know, my, my thing is, you know, I, several parents, you know, including myself, who didn't get it in time to respond to, you know, what we would like to have, maybe possibly consider.
And Mrs. Moore, you told me you got all of your surveys back?
Yeah, they went home in progress reports.
Hmm? Excuse me?
Which would be, that came from your?
They went home in the, in, uh, I don't know, progress reports.
Okay. My progress report was mailed to my address, to my child, and I didn't get it till February eighth, so... Just my two cents.
I know what I mean.
I, I'm kind of concerned, I mean, we haven't achieved five snow days yet, to even take a vote on what options we need to do, that we need to take an option, so we need to take a vote on this now.
We don't have to accumulate five according to Pam.
No, we don't.
When I sent her an email, I said, must we miss five school days before we can begin the weeks end of day? Her response was, no, we can begin anytime.
So, at the pleasure of this board, what would you like to do?
I'll move to adopt the optional extended school day, um, and add that to the policy on school closings and cancellations.
Okay, so the, clarify that one more time, what was it again?
To add the optional section allowing the extension of school days to the policy on school days.
So extending the school day by one hour?
Right, add this optional language section.
You have a second on that motion? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Had I got a survey, uh, not one, had I got a survey, I would've filled it out, and it would've been for, you know, to have the extended day. Because I think the day's long enough now, when some of the kids get on, possibly watch six o'clock.
It would have to be a lot of missed, um, surveys to make up for the overwhelming numbers that were-
Well, that's only, that's only twenty-two. That's only twenty-two surveys out of all the kids that go to school, and I seriously didn't want.
Yeah, I, I have a question on this, um, I mean, if, if they are mailed out, I mean, our mail in Quebec doesn't go to Quebec and then go locally, it has to go to Bangor and back, and then somebody wants to mail it back and everything, but some people don't check their mail every day, huh? Check their mail every day, but, um, wouldn't it be easier just to use the list of the people that are, um, like, uh, when school is gonna be a late start or something, and you have that list of Messenger, of how to contact the people for the parents? Can't you just use that list and throw in a survey monkey with one question, so that they know that what went to the parent, and that it comes back, and it shows it, and there isn't any paper involved, and surveys are used all over the place, they're on Facebook for, um, different things of, you know, of the town asks questions or something, I mean, it, they're very easy. And you just slap it on, you send out, you put a note saying, hey, we sent out a survey today, they do one click, and it's done. You don't have to do the mail, you don't have to pay the Sam, send it.
I think, my, my-
Why aren't we doing that?
My answer is, I think so, because School Messenger is a specific software program, and the messages that we send, I believe, are limited by character length, as to how long it can be, so if- I like the idea, believe me, but I, I can't confirm with a hundred percent certainty that the Messenger system will let a parent respond.
No, 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 and I'm not saying use that system and say, we already have all their contact information of their emails.
Right.
So you do a copy and paste on there, you have all the information, you put it into the Survey Monkey, you put a message on there, a survey has gone out to parents, that's it. And then they respond off the Survey Monkey, and you have, you have your results instantly, and it says survey will end at this time.
Just to notify them that there's a survey on, on the school website.
Yeah, that would be nice too, saying parents, be aware that the survey has been out.
Yes, you're right, I mean, the, the, the news box.
Yeah. And then, and then there's no doubt that everybody has, um, you know, received a survey, and has had the option. We don't have to worry about this mail mix-up or anything, it doesn't cost anything, and it's very, you know, um, there's not a lot of room for error and miscalculations.
Mike, how does that affect the high school here? Their buses, how does that affect that, Mr. Johnson?
They're on a different system.
Another extra hour.
The elementary school is on the system out of Eastport.
Oh, they're timeframe you, you mean?
No.
No.
For school, you know, for closings and stuff like that, the notification comes out of the Eastport system. And the high school students operate out of the Machias system, or AOS ninety-six system, which we're messaging, so...
About the extra hour, are you?
Yeah, on the bus, how would it affect their coming home?
On the extra hour added to the day, I think is what-
Just, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that's what you mean, I'm not speaking for, but I think that's what you mean.
Yeah, we're talking about, about messaging. It's just an hour later.
I mean, do they, they just wait an hour, they just have to settle their way?
Who's that?
The high school kid?
Are we running free buses right now?
Oh, cool, I didn't know they had free ones.
We own free buses, and as long as free buses are running, we're running free buses as long as we have drivers. So, apparently, one-twenty-one was down again the other day, so...
Nice, I didn't know.
Can I ask something about that, too? Um, the buses ran a little bit late, and they posted it on Facebook, which was great, but I sometimes, I don't get on in the morning, and that system that you were talking about before, is there any, if buses are running late, that a quick text can be sent to the parent?
Imagine it can be, yeah, you can put anything into that system, yeah.
You know, it's the same-
It should've been done, that's what I'm thinking, I need to go before.
You know what I mean, like, that would be good, I mean, not that, because I just didn't get, I have to get on every morning.
Well, I think, at, at one time, I remember, earlier in the year, we had a bus that didn't start or broke down in the morning, and that messenger did go out. and that messenger did go out, because I remember that.
The other day, it didn't.
It did go out the other day because it, someone.
But I mean, just a short.
Didn't do it.
Yeah, but I mean, is that the way it's supposed to be from here on? It just wasn't, you know, I just think that would be really good for parents that don't like that.
Apparently someone missed that step to do that.
Okay, thank you, clarify.
I don't know, would it be possible to send out a survey, see if you got a survey?
For what?
No.
Well, I was wondering, like, how many surveys was mailed out?
This is a dead issue now. This has been voted on, sorry.
Can I, can I just clarify about the day two? The bus delay was roughly ten to fifteen minutes. And by the time, I know, but I'm just saying, by the time it got processed, by the time they got the message out.
Anna, Anna, no one's taking offense at that, we're just, we're just saying, yeah.
I think the reason it didn't get out, it's on the same plan figure out, is that no one's being defendable. I'd just like to point out something, if I'm allowed to speak, if I'm not allowed to speak, I won't speak.
No, but I don't want people to think that I'm an idiot.
No, no, the thing is.
Consider the discussion, the first draft, Lubeck, school department proposed budget for this year, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. I might have brought it exactly enough. I can read it this year, wow.
Yeah.
My comment on the floor.
Special paper, read it.
Mine, I called over and requested.
Well, wait until we get distributed, I think we're gonna be ready exactly on the number. So, if you want to look on page one, uh, I'd like to just walk us through the budget and then I'll field as many questions as there are at the end, but. We're on page one, this is the revenue page. Uh, you can see required local at the very top, I referenced that number already, that went down thirty-three thousand dollars. The other number I want to reference, uh, the second number, I should say, state subsidy. That number was put in, uh, in the middle under intergovernmental revenue and that went down a very, uh, relatively small amount, six hundred and ten dollars and ninety-nine cents. Uh, the next number I want to call your attention to on this page, fund balance forward. This particular version of the budget uses a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We know that money is available based on your audit and I've reported on that previously. Finally, additional local, back up on the local revenue. That number dropped, uh, because the required local went down, we used more balance forward. The budget was reduced in several areas, which I'll get to section by section. But when it's all said and done, where it says total local revenue in bold, this particular version reduces the tax commitment by a hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents, uh, which translates roughly into point eight-five mils. The valuation here in Lubeck, somewhere around a hundred and seventy-five or a hundred and seventy-six million. Hundred and fifty-one thousand translating to about point eight-five mils or eighty-five dollars on property value at a hundred thousand. So if your property, if you live on the shore and you have lovely oceanside home and it's valued at three hundred thousand for taxation, multiply that eighty-five by three and that's your savings. Uh, but this is the revenue page. The last thing I'll point out on this page at the very bottom, the gross budget, the size of the overall budget, uh, was decreased by a hundred and twenty-seven, two eighty-one, forty-eight at the very bottom of the page. So your budget was reduced on the expenditure side as well. On page two, a couple items I'll point out. As always, you can see salary and benefits, uh, for the teachers. With the insurance breakdowns to your right and the top right, uh, you can see ed tech salaries and benefits also. One item I want to call your attention to, where it says books and periodicals, last section, probably seven or eight lines up from the bottom. You will see a reduction from twenty thousand to thirty-five hundred. Uh, I'm happy to say we're implementing the new curriculum and associated materials, so that line was reduced appropriately. Uh, so those expenses were removed and that is what accounts for the negative sixteen thousand, five hundred that you see there. Uh, so that particular cost center was decreased, as you can see the number at the bottom of page two, so a twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollar and ninety-nine cent decrease. On page three, if there is a mixed blessing in this budget, it is located on page three. This is your tuition line. You can see, uh, tuition to Maine public schools, that would be Meteus and the CCLC. You can see that line decreasing by sixty-one thousand and the tuition to WA decreasing by thirty thousand. This is the bulk of the savings in your budget and the reason I say it is a mixed blessing, look at your total number of students. For the year that we're sitting in, we had thirty-six secondary students, projected for next year, thirty. So, I say it's a mixed blessing because fewer students means less tuition. However, it also means your resident enrollment is dropping and dropping quickly. Uh, losing six in one year for a, for a school in a town as small as we are, that's significant. Uh, but it does represent a financial savings. Uh, gifted and talented cost center and, uh, the regular instruction cost center is total at the very bottom in the dark, uh, rectangle, uh, hundred and six thousand dollars in savings when it's all said and done. Most of that realized through, uh, a lower tuition line.
Can I ask a question on, um, population size? Um, do we know how many kids will be coming in? Do we know that yet?
We have to have a precast, right, precast in our calendar then.
Right.
Five are going out, kind of coming in.
You can always bump that one or two each way.
Mm-hmm. I don't know what's coming in the precast.
I mean, what's the specific number right now?
Thing I wonder is asking, what's your number at the school right now?
It's sixty-five.
Yeah.
In the high school, thirty-six?
No, oh, yeah, sixty-eight, sixty-five.
Moving on, on to page four, special education. Uh, this is another area that's seen a, a smaller reduction, but there have been some changes on this page I want to call your attention to. Second section down, where it says ed tech salary, you'll see a bunch of lines zeroed out. It is the recommendation of our special education director that it is no longer necessary for a special education tech to be in special education room. Okay. Numbers. And I verified this with her and the data that I have, and I'll use this as an example and I have to be careful because of your numbers, I, I can't, uh, compromise confidentiality, but I will say generally what the regulation is. Students that have a five oh four or receive speech language services don't have to go to the special education room to receive those services. Uh, we have somebody else who provides us with speech and language and somebody with a five oh four, uh, may or may not, uh, have needs that would require them to be self-contained in special education room. But it is the recommendation of our special education director that that tech position is no longer needed. The other thing that I will say about this, if we look to the right, you will see our current person in that position. Uh, they will continue next year, but their assignment will change. Uh, they won't be designated as a special education technician for that room. Uh, they will be functioning as a one-on-one, but that person will still be with us, they won't lose their job. Uh, and that is a requirement, uh, based on the needs of our system. So that person is still budgeted for. If you're curious, it's right to the right, see where it says LE? That stands for local entitlement, those are federal dollars. So this position is funded entirely with federal dollars and is not, uh, based on local taxation. Uh, so that person is still budgeted for, albeit under the federal umbrella and changes to the special education program as indicated at the recommendation of our director. If we look on further down. Hold on a second. Okay, go ahead. Um, and the other school assistants that we have around the AOS. Mm-hmm. Okay, in the special education room, do they have ed techs in? Yes, some do and some don't, depending upon the needs of the individual school's population. And how many ed techs do we have in the school right now? Uh, special education technicians, I believe. In, in the, in the school? Well, let's see, flip back, they're listed on the previous page. Two pages ago, yeah. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six? Does that sound right, Tina?
Yeah.
Six. And, and these people are assigned into what, what rooms, what grades? Uh, it does vary, some work in multi-age rooms and they would be considered regular education technicians. The one that I was just referencing is considered a special education technician and that largely is based on assignment and funding source. Uh, but you can see these folks here identified by their initials. And what happens in, what happens in the case where in the special education room, the special education teacher is out for the day? The expect, the expectation is that the ed techs that would be assisting the special education teacher would be familiar enough with that student's IEP, we had the process, would be able to continue. Because our special education teacher, like any other teacher, has sick days, personal days, professional days by contract and that is common around the district. Why wouldn't it be prudent to have a special education technician or an ed tech in the special education class? Assigned to the general population of the special education class. Well, this board can make that, essentially, you can make that decision. You can spend your local money however you would like. The recommendations from our special education director are based on numbers, ratios, and the needs of the students. You, as a board, can say, we think there should be a tech in the room all the time, we want to put that back in the budget. Show of hands and I'll put it in the budget.
Wasn't there something before where this is federally funded?
It's federally funded, it's, it's possession, it's, it's projected to be federally funded next year.
So why are we cutting it if it's, if it's federal funds, why are we, um, even taking it away? I mean, it's not gonna affect the taxpayers, right, if it's federal money?
Well, right now, I don't believe that it is fully funded with federal money. I believe we're using our local entitlement money for something else. And I say something else, we have other special education expenses that we would be using local entitlement money for. But those are changing and they're reflected right below that, so it, it may become a little more obvious as we move along. Okay, guys.
Well, I mean, these are our most vulnerable children, absolute most vulnerable. I don't want them shortchanged at all and, I mean, one-on-one is one of the most precious things to a special needs child. And I have never heard a taxpayer saying, let's cut back on our special needs kids and save some money. And especially if there's other money out there, um, I, you know, I, I'm not agreeing with this.
I mean, obviously, I mean, you disagree and I will, I will say this again. This board as a group, if you feel that you want that ed tech put back in the budget, you can spend your local money however you see fit. If you direct me to put it back in, it'll go back in and essentially, you know, if an ed tech is twenty thousand dollars, instead of being down a hundred and fifty, you'll be down a hundred and thirty.
Another thing, I, these change all the time, the needs of the children change all the time. Right now, this might not be necessary, but two months from now, you know, a, a one-on-one might be ordered for a child and then we're gonna have to throw it back in the budget and we're not gonna have it in the budget.
That's true.
And I think it's.
That's one of my main concerns right there.
Yeah, they, they change very quickly. We've seen children change very quickly and have to change, um.
I have, I have other towns that statistically have higher special education needs than Lubeck and they carry enough in their budget for the what-if. Uh, they carry enough in their budget for unforeseen things, so there's room to wiggle. And again, if, if this board wants to put in an ed tech because you feel that's important, for whatever reason, it can go back in. I, I think it's just, you know, putting, putting someone else in that room to help out is very important. And then not being blindsided by something that happens in September or even October or whatever, uh, where we need someone in that room. And especially if, you know, the special education teacher that we have now is out for the day and then you still have someone who's familiar with the process and what has to be done for these kids on a normal day-to-day basis and doesn't let them get out of routine. Because that's a really big thing for special education kids, to keep in the routine. And once they get out of a routine, well, I mean, it might take a kid a couple of days or even maybe a couple of weeks to get back into that routine.
I, I just wanna, I'm a little confused, we are keeping this as a one-on-one, correct?
That, that is a requirement. Yeah.
Okay, I, I somehow, but.
And that, that, that will remain. That will remain. But that one-on-one is taken out of the room and that's where I have the concern. Whereas you're not gonna have an ed tech in the room to help out with the other kids that are in there. You know, you, you might have three or four kids in that room at one time, where someone needs a little bit extra help, especially with testing and something like that or, you know, some, some specialized instruction. And, and that's one of my concerns right there, is you get these kids out of routine and it can really mess them up for a couple of days or a couple of weeks. So, I mean, that's my main concern about it.
And what, another main concern is, these are mandated by, you know, the, the federal government's behind these IEPs that says, you have to provide this and if, um, if the ed tech that is supposed to be assigned an hour, two hours a day for that child and this one doesn't show up and we're short in ed tech, we've shortchanged that child. I don't want any shortchanging on our special education children.
Okay.
I, I, we don't have to exaggerate the budget, but I want to make sure our kids are covered on the special ed.
I want all kids covered.
I do too, but no, no place else is that, are we cutting this?
At, at, at our next meeting, I can bring it, I can bring a revised budget that will, that will put the ed tech position back in, we'll calculate salary and benefits and I'm, I'm sensing that we, we at least want to see what that looks like, so we can do that. I want, I want to question the other three members of the board that, you know, I mean, the two of us have an input. What are your concerns, what are your input on this? Do you understand what I'm getting to as far as, you know, routine with the child in special education and, you know, having someone there to fall back on a reserve? Do you understand my, my whole position here?
Oh, yes.
Like our special ed, right, do you have any concerns?
Um, well, so it's just interesting that the special ed director, um, is not recommending it. Maybe there could be a position that when the special ed classroom is not covered, that, that an extra person goes in there, but it's a floating position.
That's still adding an ed tech and where are you going to put that ed tech? So, and, you know, I haven't heard any direct input from the special education director of the AOS either, so. And I'm just gonna leave that out there, okay? Okay, okay. So what, I, I would like to see, you know, at least an ed tech into that position, you know, for those reasons that I, that I've expressed. You know, basically, if the ed, the special education teacher is out, at least there's someone familiar with the, with the, uh, IEP of the children who were in that day and it might add a little, you know, extra help in that room on a normal day. And not to get these kids out of routine. Yes.
Just like the comment I want Melissa to give, if a person is hired with special education funding, they can only work with special education children, so they couldn't float.
Well, that's only on Title I, so I mean, we're not, we're not talking, yeah, we're not talking Title I funds here unless you buy your grant on that.
They might be able to go over that one.
So the, the last two sections on page four, I want to call your attention to, to a couple of things. Uh, student transportation, you can see a significant reduction here from forty thousand to ten thousand. If you're wondering what's behind that. At the start of last year, or, excuse me, at the start of the current year we're sitting in, there was great concern that we would not be able to get students to Callous Day Treatment. The forty thousand dollar figure represented what it would have cost to hire two different people to transport those students. I'm happy to say that our friends at Callous Day Treatment are actually sending one of their employees to provide transportation and that is the, that is why we can reduce this line. Uh, that service has been going on this year, so we are not going to fully expand that forty thousand dollars out of this year's budget. Uh, but because Callous Day Treatment was willing to work with us and truthfully, it's in their best interest because they're getting the tuition for those students. So, they were, they were able to work with us and we are, as a result, able to reduce not only that line in terms of salary, but also travel at the bottom. So you can see the thirty thousand has been reduced to ten, like the forty thousand, all. So you can see the 30,000 has been reduced to 10, like the 40,000 also being reduced to 10.
Now, that's paid as a mileage right now, correct?
Yes.
So where I'm seeing Medicare and unemployment, where is that coming? Because we're basically paying this person mileage?
Yeah, I believe, and I will have to verify this, but where it says salary, we are paying, I believe, an hourly rate for that person, which would explain why the benefits are attached to it.
Plus mileage?
I think so. I can verify that. But part of the rationale behind that is that person would have a contract with Callis Day Treatment.
Sign me up for that job.
And they wouldn't, they wouldn't do that.
Don't have to wear a radio.
So, on page five, the next page. You see special education in terms of supplies, equipment, the rest of the special education cost center here. A couple of things I want to clarify. Where it says public school tuition, day treatment, the elementary section went down, but written below it, the secondary section went up. So we are still accounting for those two students, but the cost center is straddled this particular year because of their age. Secondary, nine to 12, again, this is just a, this is just matching the cost center with the service. You can see secondary tuition budgeted for here where it wasn't in the previous year. Again, that's the age and maturation of the student in question. On page six, elementary co-curricular, largely unchanged. These are coaching stipends, money for officials, general supplies and so on, very modest increase of $27.93. Student and staff support. This particular item, we actually have a nurse that's grant-funded, so let me make a note of that. That could probably come out. I've got that on mine, so our friends at the, our friends at the medical center, we want to make sure that we're all on the same page here. So I'll revisit that one. Now, right below that, $3,500, that's star testing. That's basic assessment fee that we use to generate data for Title I. It also informs general instruction. On page seven, Assistant Administration and Superintendent of Schools. At the top half, you see board stipends and associated benefits. You see a line for your audit, legal services line, insurance, and some miscellaneous travel and so on. If a board member wishes to travel on down to the event in October at the MSNA conference or traveling to meetings, you take it off that line. Under Superintendent of Schools, this is the AOS assessment. This is your share of the district cost. It went down this year, 101, 033, and 80 cents. That's down 4,000 from the previous year, and then again, that's due to fewer students. Those costs are distributed as a percentage of resident students. Losing students, you get cheaper. On page eight, you see lines for the principal's office, salary and benefits for the principal and our secretary as well. You see lines for the copier lease, telephone bill, advertising. You see fees for the messenger system. This particular line, this particular cost center does show an increase in comparison to the previous year, the bulk of which is technology software. And this is a reorganization. You can see the note in bold right to the right. Software grading, reports, and attendance has moved from regular ed into this particular cost center. This seems to make a little more sense since it's what Noreen uses right on her desk every day to crank out a variety of reports. So it essentially was moved from regular education into this cost center, which is a little more reflective of where the, where the work actually takes place. Coming down the home stretch, transportation and buses on page nine, salary and benefits for our bus drivers. One thing I do want to call your attention to here, where it says bus payment principle. Just to refresh our memory, at the start of the year, we had the opportunity to apply for a VW grant that we hoped would have purchased two buses. The $40,000 represents 20% match of two new school buses. As I reported earlier, we were unsuccessful in that grant attempt, so we ended up buying a new bus. And we were, we had made the first bus payment this year, so out of that $40,000, we're going to pay approximately 16 as our first bus payment, already have for year one. And that 15, 805, 83 is the principal for next year's bus payment. So if you're wondering why that line dropped from 40 to 15, it is because we do not have to pony up a 20% match on two buses, we're only making one bus payment on our new bus. So that's what's represented on that line.
Don't we want to start putting money aside for a second bus? Huh? You don't think it has to still happen?
Could we be put on that list again this coming fiscal year to acquire another new bus?
Yep. Make a note of that.
Because what happens is, I mean, you've got two buses now that, you know, we seem to be every other day having some issues with things, and at least get another 2019 bus or 2020 bus. Do that.
I'll look into that and then bundle that up at the next meeting. Page 10, facilities maintenance. Couple things I want to talk about here. This particular version of your budget, if you scan down through it, obviously, you have salaries and benefits at the top for our custodian. You see lines to pay the water bill, trash removal, snowplow, and so on. In this particular version of your budget, two things stayed the same, and I'm looking for direction from my board as we move forward. Heating, fuel, and the HVAC system. I have recorded earlier in previous board meetings that we are indeed using more fuel oil this winter than in the previous year. It's been colder, more degree days, we talked about that already tonight. Please circle the $60,000 figure, because in this version of your budget, I kept it the same. Depending upon which direction this board wants to take, we may want to increase that line. If I put another 15,000 on it, instead of saving 150, you're going to save 135. You understand how the numbers work? Also, HVAC...
At that one time, that line item was $80,000. I want to say probably back about 40 years ago.
Okay.
So...
And the other thing that remains here is the HVAC system. Now, that 15, 5, just to refresh our memory from last spring, was for a set of architectural drawings, potentially bid specifications. I left it there, and I'm looking for direction moving forward, what to do with that line.
Yeah, we'll, I'll have some numbers for you on the next meeting.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yep.
There's a lot of, there's federal agencies and state agencies that offer payment plans, and you can loan the money from, and for, like, you know, major facility needs, such as maybe heating. Like, the town is getting something, and they're doing a match for a sewer system that's through the government because we're in, they're in need of it. Is there anything like that out there for a heating system where we could make, you get the loan from the state and you just make the payments instead of this huge chunk to taxpayers?
Couple things that I would say. You mentioned the town. Towns are eligible for something called a CDVG grant, Community Development Grant, schools or not, a town can be.
Yeah.
The other thing that I would say is, I've contacted two people in the Department of Education, got a response from one of them on what was referred to historically as the revolving renovation fund. And the answer that I got was, they are not accepting applications to access the revolving renovations fund at this time. Interestingly, there is a bill before the legislature in this year's session to, that would, if approved, put some money back into the revolving renovations fund. If you're curious, that fund, when it was funded, when there was money into it, schools could apply, projects were rated, it was competitive, but there was a large amount of money available historically in years past, but they're not taking applications right now. So I started down that road, but our friends at the state is not ready yet.
They were, I, I thought, I'm going to raise the same thing, because at the commencement I talked to somebody, and they had, the applications had ended in August, and the awards came out in October for one of them. And there were major renovations like this, but they said they only come out about every two years, and sometimes they even skip every three years.
Right.
But, I mean, got to get our foot in the door, and we got to apply for everything possible. And we have to help ourselves as much as possible instead of just going to the taxpayers. I'd like to look at every option, because this is going to be a huge pill to swallow for people. And you're talking half a million dollars, and we better start making sure we've exhausted all options.
Right. So a couple of things, coming down the home stretch, on page 11, food service program, this is your lunch program. Salary and benefits here, money for food, modest increase there. Contingency stayed the same. On page 12, you can see which cost centers went up, which went down. This is a general summary. Regular instruction went down. We talked about the decline in the number of secondary students. We highlighted the transportation reductions, and this particular version includes the elimination of that ed tech under special education, but I've got a note to myself, put that back in so we can see that. Transportation and buses, that line was reduced from $40,000 down to a single bus payment. Some other reductions, so this summary on page 12, what went up, what went down. I think we explained generally and quickly why things went down or why they went up. And finally, when it's all said and done, just to remind us, this version passes on about $150,000 in savings to the local taxpayer, about 8.85 mils. So that number's going to change as we move along through the budget process. And if there are, if you have any suggestions, don't hesitate to get those.
When, when are we going to have our first budget workshop? I want to have it real close to the date or anything. We should...
Jump on the gun like she is, I was going to ask her.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
We are, we're required, as you know, to have three joint workshops with the Budget Committee. Historically, we piggyback that with board meetings, and I think that has worked well in the past. To me, if we meet at 6:00, I can come at 4:30, and we'll have, we'll have a joint meet.
The town is like six, Mr. Johnson, so far as...
Too early. Too early for things, because we're just looking at budgets, we're having the final discussion.
Well, I'm just saying, they used to work together.
So if we can look into getting some meetings, probably like the first week in April, maybe, for the first one, or somewhere around there.
Whatever, whatever our next board meeting is. I'll plan, I'll plan, I'll plan on piggybacking, and we're meeting twice a month, so we'll be, potentially, we're required to have at least three. But if we're meeting twice a month, there's no reason why our friends in the Budget Committee Group isn't...
So if we can reach out to them for those, our particular meetings and...
We're going to have to decide.
14th.
Our next, in March, it's 14th, is it?
14th and 28th, and probably sometime, April 11th is the first meeting in April.
I haven't got, I haven't got April booked out.
No, I don't remember the date. I start in March.
So the 14th, the 14th and the 28th, we've got, we've got on the books anyway, so. I'll plan on 4:30 on the meeting.
So probably on the 28th and then the 14th, the 11th of April. There's also going to be a little jogging around, the next school board meeting in April, the 25th, because that's school vacation week.
Yep.
So.
Last year, there were two-hour meetings, and we got through, like, three pages. And they were very thorough with the town and everything. We didn't have enough time to get through budgets and stuff. Are we going down to an hour and a half now? Let's say two hours?
I was going from memory. I didn't think they were two hours last time, but the committee, 4 or 4:30, doesn't make any difference. I can come, I can come at 4:00.
Do that, so we can reach out to the Budget Committee for those particular dates, and then we can look at this.
Mr. Johnson, real quick, would you mind telling me, on page four, on the special ed, I didn't check what you said, why the tutor, the salary on tutor midway down shows a zero.
Yep.
And why is that? You've got 6,000 in there, but I don't understand.
Okay, you're on page four.
Yeah.
And it says, in the middle of the page, you're wondering about the zeros?
Yeah.
Or the, or the specific line where it says tutor salary?
That one, yeah.
Okay. The tutor salary, it is a possibility that some students' IEP would call for summer tutorial. The ESY stands for extended school year. And if we have a student who needs that, we have a line for it, but the zero tells me that we have a student, that we don't have any students who require that service.
So any questions on the budget? Pull it right now, go ahead.
Oh, just speaking out, what a warrant, you said, you know, right now, we don't have anybody, but certainly could have something regulated in an IEP that says that they have to have extended school year, and then we don't have a budget for it.
No, we have contingency for that. I can't remember in my years on the school board that we've had in the last two.
No, I couldn't recall what it was, or the zeros or the...
Yeah, I can't recall that we've had a student that required those services, but...
Yeah.
And that, and that 6,000, that might only be a portion of that taken out of there, so.
So do I have a motion just to accept the first draft?
I don't know. Okay, second on that motion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. To consider entering executive session pursuant to statutory citation one MRSA SS 405-6D to discuss a student matter. All in favor going for your special session?
Is there a motion at a second?
Okay, second on that? All in favor? Okay. 747.